Gentlemen, welcome to the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Kingston Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and her God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as above.
Okay, we'll begin the meeting by introducing the people at the table. To my far right is Susan Eyre, our administrative assistant. Next is Ellen Faulkner, our newest addition to the board. Welcome aboard. I know you served once a term three thirty years ago, was it?
Interview.
Yeah, a long time ago.
It was twelve.
Well, we welcome you aboard and look forward to working with you, for sure.
Thank you.
Peter Baiki, board member. I'm Ellie Alessio, chair. Glenn Kopplman, vice chair and board member, and Laurie Schwett, board member. The first item of business tonight is the reorganization of the board to elect chair, vice chair, and establish the liaisons for the coming year. I'm going to ask that I not be considered as chair. Vice chair would be nice, but I've got a number of personal items coming up this next year that need to be addressed, and I may have to take some time out, and I don't want to hold up any business of the board. So while I welcome the opportunity to be your vice chair, if you'd like, I also would like to place Glenn Kopplman's name in nomination for the chairman.
I will second that, but I would second it with a friendly amendment if possible. Did it need?
Microphone.
He's already tapping on the window.
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a friendly amendment. I second that motion, but to make a friendly amendment to do it as a slate and that we would vote for Glenn as chair and Ellie as vice chair in the same motion, if that's okay with anybody.
Well, is there a second to that?
I second it.
Discussion?
Are there any other nominations? Whoa.
Well, we get three microphones.
It's probably, I'm still on.
Almost.
Are there any other nominations? That's all I was asking.
Any other nominations? Are we discussion?
Hi, Jen. I'm sitting at home here. Being chair is not, oh, shit.
Being chair is not any fun, so thank, as a resident, thank you for being chair for the last year.
I had to go ahead and my head come off and it's off. You want to proceed? You feel comfortable doing that?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Ellie. I'd like to sort of go along with what Ellen was saying. As a board member, just thanking you for your chairmanship for the last year.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm sure we can still work a few things out this next year and as needed.
I would expect so.
Which we did anyway, so it was all good. It was all good.
Okay. So the first thing on our agenda now is setting ourselves up for representatives to various committees and boards that the select board sits on, and also liaisons to various departments and so forth. Susan has drafted a revised sheet for us, and it should be in your packets. It should look like this. It's put into a table form. It looks different than previous years. One of the things that we sometimes, sometimes might not have been clear was which of these entities do we, as board members, have a vote on as we sit on that? Because there are some committees and boards that by statute and by organization description give us a voting seat, and there are some that we don't. We just, we just sit and observe and participate as needed, but not necessarily vote. So the ones that have a V after them are voting memberships, and it also requires us to have an alternate, because if the primary person for any of those cannot fulfill a duty at a given meeting, it's the alternate that would then take that person's place. And so when we, when we handle the ones that have voting responsibilities, we should also designate an alternate. And when those are, when this is all filled out and so forth, we'll, we'll communicate that out to all the boards and committees so that they know who's who and they know who to reach out to if they, they have to. Before we start going through the list, I'd just like to have the board consider something. Normally, we just walk through these and people indicate whether they're interested in, you know, who wants to do what. One of the things that, that this board has been struggling a bit with over the last year and a half is, I don't know how to phrase it, a bit of harmony and well-being within some of our operating structures here in town, particularly in Town Hall. And I would like to suggest that one board member be the liaison to any of the departments and entities within Town Hall. So that would be four of them, and I realize it's a big responsibility, but as whoever, whoever would take the role, if we, if you agree to do it that way, it would be one person as a contact point, as opposed to multiple people. And I think it might be, it might be a better chance of achieving the success that we really need to have. So that's my suggestion, and that would end up being, the four, four spots would be, they're all under department head liaisons: Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Finance, Board Admin slash Assessing, and Building Inspectors. So I'll open, why don't we open that up for discussion?
Glenn, I was actually thinking the same idea. I do, I do think that it may help that possibly we split up like the Town Clerk, Tax Clerk, Tax Clerk, and Finance for a person, a liaison. And I was, I was actually thinking the Assessing, Building Department, that side of the hallway, have one, kind of on the same idea with what you're talking about. I think it would help the transparency and getting in the communication. I personally, to speak myself, I think the four would be quite a task. I mean, just having two the last time in the entire town, I found myself quite busy. You know, I still work often, I'm able to make my own schedule, but I just think taking on four may be, may be a tough role to hold on that situation. That's, but I agree with you that we maybe should combine some of those departments. It would help the communication and the, in the day-to-day operation of the Town, the Town Hall. That's my thought.
I like that idea better than the four, because I think the volume of work would be a bit onerous, but that's not to say that, that the Finance and Town Clerk can't coordinate, Liaison can't coordinate with the other liaison and get people together as needed. Tammy's elected, so that makes it a little bit different for her.
Absolutely.
Microphone.
We'll get you trained yet.
Yeah, I gotta get used to that. I have him banging on my head at home.
He's gonna have to put it on your breakfast table in the morning.
Oh, seriously, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get texts. The only thing I'd say about that, and I understand, you know, taking the Town Clerk out, but whoever's going to do that, if they, for example, also wanted to do Budget, I think Budget and Finance should be together. I think it's counterproductive to have somebody talking to Finance and someone talking to Budget, and then have Finance person actually be annoyed by, not annoyed, but having their work interrupted by the liaison to them for that, but then maybe the Budget, the Board of Selectmen's liaison is also having to talk to her. So I just thought that that would make more sense to have one person doing Budget and Finance. They seem to go together, but that's up to the board, I just. But do people have any suggestions on?
Yeah, Budget and Finance work together well anyway. I mean, they, the two chairs, both the department head and the chair, Budget may work a lot together anyways.
So if you're gonna have a selectman doing, it just seemed, again, to, to limit the interruptions to the person in that position, it might be better if Budget and Finance was the same selectman liaison. That's my only thought. As I said, it's not a killer thing, but I just thought that that would.
No, 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 I don't think it's a killer thing.
That seems to go together, to me. But anyway, are we supposed to volunteer to do these things, or how's the deal?
Sure, but as we did last year.
Normally, normally, board members would express interest, and then we, if, if there are dueling individuals, we duke it out.
Well, I was interested in Budget, but I don't mind doing the things you guys are talking about. I don't mind doing Budget and the things you guys are talking about.
And Finance and Tammy Town Clerk.
And again, Tammy.
There's not, there's, it's a matter of facilitation.
I mean, doing the admin stuff and the things you guys have talked about on the bottom part of the page, the department head liaisons that you guys have talked, I don't know if somebody else wants to do it.
So I think you're, you're talking about having the same liaison for the, if you're what, the Assessing and Building side of.
Yeah, what you guys were just talking about is having one person do that. I'm willing to give that a shot if you want me to.
I, I think I'd like you to. Building, you know, administrative assistant, assessing and permitting, and building inspectors. Because that needs some coordination.
I'm willing to give that a shot, if that's okay.
And as the new person, someone who's coming into it fresh, it's probably not a bad idea.
Correct. I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to.
So just for, so you just volunteered for a bunch of stuff, right?
Yeah.
Didn't anybody have any issues with that?
No.
I'll do that, I'll do.
So, so I need to write them down. Which ones, Ellen?
Well, I said I'd do the Board Admin, Assessing, Building Inspectors. I'd take that on, and I'd also do Budget, and I have no problem with adding Finance to it, even though I'm doing the other thing, so I think that goes together. I have no problem with, if you want to throw the Town Clerk in, because in my opinion, where she's an elected official, she might need a liaison, but she, it's not like she needs much else.
She usually knows what's going on better than we do.
So, but, but that's up to anybody else. I'm more than happy to sort of take the group, if you will, but that doesn't matter.
If you're willing to give it a try, why don't we try it? And if after some period of time, you feel that we need to do a readjustment, we can do that.
I mean, that.
How's that?
It just depends on whether, you know, anything else, but I'm willing to give it a shot.
So that would be, under department head liaisons, Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Finance, Board Admin slash Assessing, and Building slash Inspectors.
Yeah.
And then Budget up above. Okay. And?
If I figure I take those on, it sort of backs off against if maybe, maybe somebody else picks up one of the committees, you know, could do that. Because I can come in during the day, where I know some, a lot of other people can't.
Most of us can, yeah.
Yeah.
And we need an alternate for that position, because that, that is a voting seat for Budget, yes.
I would like to take, I've never done with it, so no one objects to that. I'd like to take the alternate for that.
Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
But I have a feeling that I won't ever have to sit. I think I'll be there all the time. That's true.
Well, you've been attending to the last couple days.
I do attend, yeah.
It's not like you're totally unfit.
Yeah.
Okay, then with that out of the way, let's, let's start at the top and work our way down through the list, okay?
Okay.
Planning Board also includes the CIP group.
And I still like to do that. I've enjoyed, I like this land use stuff, to be honest with you. So if there's no objection, I'd be happy to serve on the Planning Board.
No objection at all.
No objection here.
Don't everybody.
I think we're finding to make sure none of us have to do it, so.
I'll throw myself on as the alternate if you, in case you're not available.
Okay.
Because I've been on the board before, so I have no problem doing that.
All right, good.
And the CIP, you said, as well, right? That's not.
It's, yeah, it's just rolled in.
But yeah, okay.
It's just rolled into it, yeah. Historic District Commission is also a voting position.
I'm currently the rep, and I'm happy to stay on it unless someone else wants it.
Anyone else would like to have it? All right, Laurie, that's you. I have served in that position before. I'm happy to be the alternate, unless someone else would like to be. Heritage Commission, also a voting spot. I'm currently the Select Board rep in this case. I'm happy to continue with it, unless someone else would like to have it.
No.
Okay, so that's me. We do need an alternate on that.
I'll take it. We'll, we'll just keep piggybacking like that.
Conservation Commission? Far as I know, we don't have a voting seat there, but I couldn't find any reference to it.
I don't think we do.
Okay. And I know Chuck had handled that one.
Right. And he did not vote in that committee either.
Okay.
He did not.
Okay, all right. Anyone with particular interest in that?
I see we're gonna fight over this one, huh?
We can come back to the ones that nobody wants.
We can come back to.
And then we'll move on.
If Conservation is watching, no offense.
Nothing personal.
Nothing personal, no. Energy Committee, also a voting. There are currently two Select Board members. One is myself and Laurie. I have been the rep, and Laurie has been the alternate to that. The committee has not met much in the recent months, but I would expect that sometime during two thousand and twenty-five, it'll become a bit more active again as we review some of the projects that the committee was working on, so.
The CPC.
Well, and the, and the solar, the landfill is still underway, so.
You thinking about it, Ellen?
No.
Are folks, are, are folks good with, are folks good with me continuing with that?
Yes.
And Laurie as alternate? Laurie, you're good?
The sigh was for the projects.
Library Trustees?
Can I have a question on that one? I'm not, I'm not volunteering for it. I just want to know why we have library trustees at the top and library at the bottom? Wouldn't that be the same person or something?
We can't, we can't root trustees, because we never can.
It's Monday.
They meet on Mondays.
Oh.
And I've liaised with Melissa.
Right.
But not at the meetings, because they occur at the same time as they do.
So should, should they be listed together, the library slash trustees?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and, and it probably should be under liaisons and not under board representatives.
Correct.
All right, so let's take that off of, and, and under the liaisons, do library slash trustees.
And I don't mind doing that at all.
Okay. Would you like to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else want to fight Ellie for it?
No way.
Okay.
Well, you know, I, I had been opposed originally when the new library was built, because of the way it was done, but I gained a tremendous amount of respect and admiration for Melissa Mann, who was the current director, and the trustee. Ellen remembers when she pulled me onto the, as the library trustee for a few years. And so I got a different perspective of the library and got to admire the work that they do there, and especially now under Melissa's leadership, they've done a tremendous job, so.
Yeah, they have.
I'd like, I wouldn't mind keeping up that contact.
Okay, you've got it. Solid Waste and Recycling is also a voting spot.
I'd like to keep that.
All right. Everyone good with that?
We need an alternate, though.
You do need an alternate.
Peter?
Yeah, I'll call, I'll be an alternate on that.
Okay.
It's still one that I probably still want to go sometimes, because.
But, I mean, it's not the meeting, anybody can attend.
Well, yeah, it's open, it's like we can go to any meeting, actually.
That's true.
Yes. Okay. MS Four Committee, this is a committee that consists of DPW, there's a Select Board representative, also the Town Planner, and Building Inspector, Code Enforcement sits on that. It's a committee that, that helps to oversee the work that the town does on its stormwater management requirements through EPA, and it's called MS Four, and it's related to stormwater. I have been sitting on that committee. I can continue with it, unless someone else would like it.
And you're still comfortable with it?
Seventy-nine E is also a voting spot. Now, seventy-nine E Committee is the committee that deals with applications when we get them, and we don't get them often, because there aren't that many opportunities here in Kingston, but it's the Community Revitalization Act. It's the, it's the, it's the item that was invoked when, when the Seminary project came before us, and the developer applied for a bit of tax relief in the early phases of the project, and so that's what that's all about. There's a committee that, that exists to review applications that come in and make recommendations to the Select Board on that. And like I said, we've only had one application, and that project is getting ready to kick off, so. I, again, I've been the contact point there.
And I'll be your alternate.
Okay.
How's that sound?
Yep.
Because I don't think we'll have much of anything in that.
No. Well, there, there really aren't that many opportunities for it.
Right, in town anyways.
Because it only pertains to properties that are in certain parts of town, primarily in the center, in the village area, and to get a project of, of the sizable nature that falls into the category of this, it doesn't come every day, so.
Right.
All right, so it's me and you, Ellie. All right. The Watershed Committee, the, the board currently has two, two representatives on it, because, and that's Laurie and myself. That's a, that's a, it was an ad hoc committee formed by the board to help implement the recommendations in the Kingston Lake Watershed Management Plan, which got finished up this past year. And so the board authorized the formation of the committee. It didn't have, when we formed it, we didn't specify any membership requirements, but there was interest by several, several residents, and so the committee was formed, it's been meeting regularly, and, and it's getting ready to, to submit for some grant money to get some of the projects done. So it's, it's off to a good start, and so because, because I have an appointment to that committee, I, I would assume that I would continue with it, and Laurie, I'm guessing that you would be the same?
Uh huh.
Okay. Everyone okay with that?
Sure.
All right.
I mean, it is kind of weird, though, because it doesn't have a, how big the committee should be, or who should be on it. It's very.
It's brand new.
It is brand new.
Well, it is, and, and we did the same kind of thing when we formed the Solar Committee, which is now the Energy Committee. We did the same thing. It, it was a committee that was formed with a specific task in mind, but, but we didn't take the time to get into the structure of it, so. Okay. Museum Committee?
I'm currently the rep, and, you know, I'm, I'm good with, with staying that way, unless someone else wants to take the museum.
Hearing none. You, you've got it. All right, and now.
Go back to Conservation.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we finish off the other ones, and then go back to Conservation?
Well, they're different things. One's the rep, and one's, one's the liaison.
Doesn't matter, it's who gets assigned anyways.
Oh, well, we should probably, we, we, we might need to add one to the board representatives. Kingston Days Committee is not on here. Do we want to put it on here, just in case it becomes alive again?
I would, I would say, I would say yes, and I would, once again, volunteer for that. I tried to get on it before, but they kind of get inactive.
Right.
So if by chance I get a spark of energy, I'd be more than happy to jump on and see if I can help them out.
Okay, so we'll add that one to the, to the rep list at the top. And Peter, you've got that one. Okay. All right. So do we want to do Conservation now, or do you want to go down to the bottom of the list, second section?
I said keep going.
Keep going, okay. Highway.
I would like to do that. I would like to do that with the, with the ground and stuff like that.
Okay.
And I would like to volunteer for that, if we have access to that. And one other question I had, and I wanted to maybe get involved, that I didn't see on this. Doesn't Human Resources, do we have a, isn't that?
Human Services?
Human Services?
That's another one that we have to add. It got missed.
It got dropped off.
That's, I don't have, I don't have any use on that as well. But I, so would that be on the top or bottom?
No, it's the bottom.
Well, there's a, there's a space that's blank at the bottom, so let's add it in there.
I've been the rep for the last year and a half, so I need to not be anyway, so it needs to be a new liaison.
So Human Resources.
So Humans, Human Services. Peter, you're volunteering for that. Okay. We need to add another one to the, to the liaison list at the bottom, and that is something that we've never had before, but I heard that there was an interest in any of, the person who runs our video room would like a contact point at the Select Board, as someone that they could go to if they have issues or questions, and so I'd like to add that one to the list, and it's probably appropriate for the chair to do it, so I'm happy to do that.
He's fell over.
So what are we gonna call that?
Audio, video?
Audio, video?
A, AV?
AV.
AV, AV.
AV.
Okay.
That's one.
That's me. Okay. Fire. Got any preferences there? Okay. They're all good, right?
I don't answer.
I don't mind doing it. I haven't done it in a while, a couple of years.
Do you?
Yeah, I don't mind. I like Ram.
He likes you.
Yeah, he likes us all.
Yeah, okay. Police.
I'd like to take Police. I haven't had that before, unless someone else wants it.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Recreation?
And I just started with that, because I had taken it over from you, but I would like to continue with that, because I want to actually volunteer with them and help with the activities, unless someone else wants to. Nope, okay.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Is it going, is it going all right, bud?
Yeah, it is. It's good. We're gonna do the Easter egg hunt coming up, and it's a small committee.
I love her energy.
Oh my God, it's fantastic.
She's doing really well.
She really is.
Yeah, yeah.
So she's got good ideas, so yeah, I think it's gonna be good.
So, Conservation.
Is this where we do rock, paper, scissors?
Well, can, can, when, when do they meet? Do we?
I think they sometimes meet on second Thursday.
Is that second Thursday? Oh, I can't, because that's the solid waste, so.
Thursday, I can. Can we do it on a rotating basis, maybe?
Well, it's not a voting spot, so we don't have to designate a specific person, but I mean.
Maybe we could do it as a will call. If they got something coming up, they need us. We, we make it mandatory to be there every second Thursday. I mean, do they always have some whole agenda on?
They meet at the library, right, I think?
I honestly don't know.
Yeah.
I assume so.
Yeah, they do, because they had a snowstorm and no one called them to cancel, that the library was closed. That's what, Chuck was the one complaining about that, because he didn't get a call.
And I could do some Thursdays, because sometimes people are at my house. By the time meeting would come, it would be done, but there are two Thursdays, one where I'm, I'm. I could have trouble making Thursdays. Some Thursdays I can, some Thursdays I couldn't, so I don't mind sharing it with somebody. So, but I don't know when they meet, and, and my Thursday schedule alternates, depending on the weeks of the month and all that kind of stuff. It's every other week, but I can't always, and I don't know off the top of my head what days they are, so sometimes I could go and sometimes I couldn't, so it would kind of depend on, if someone wants to split it, I don't mind, you know, splitting the responsibility with somebody else.
I could give it a try. We can work it out. Thursday's not usually a good night for a meeting.
Yeah.
Because I have a schedule every afternoon at four, so I don't know if.
Right, maybe we could, maybe we could work out whether maybe that's not my Thursday that's a problem.
Correct.[1720.12]
It's every other week, but I can't always, I don't know off the top of my head what days they are. So sometimes I could go and sometimes I couldn't, so it would kind of depend on, if someone wants to split it, I don't mind, you know, splitting the responsibility with somebody else.
I could give it a try. We can work it out. Thursday's not usually a good night for a meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, I've scheduled every afternoon at four, so I don't know if...
Right, maybe we could, maybe we could work out whether maybe that's not my Thursday that's a problem.
Correct.
Well, if you get in big trouble, give me a call.
Okay, so it's tasked with Ellen, Ellie with Peter as the backup.
We're going to have a trifecta.
So it's going to be a tag team?
Right.
Ellen, Ellie, and Peter. All right.
Yep.
As long as you guys coordinate to make sure that they get covered.
Yeah.
All right. I believe that is the list. Are there...
Do you want to go through it just to make sure that...
Sure.
Everybody...
Can do that.
Last call?
All right. And Susan, you will do a finalized list for us and have it ready for us next, for next week. And I'll do a communication by email out to all of these various groups, and once you have the list done, we'll attach the list to the emails so that all these individuals know who's doing what. So we've got Planning Board is Ellie with Peter as their alternate. Historic District Commission is Laurie with Glenn as the alternate. Heritage Commission is Glenn with Laurie as the alternate. Budget Committee is Ellen with Laurie as the alternate. Conservation Commission is the triumvirate Ellen, Ellie, and Peter, who will work out the attendance schedule. Energy Committee is Glenn with Laurie as the alternate. We've removed Library Trustees and added that into the library down below. Solid Waste and Recycling is Laurie with Peter as the alternate. MS4 Committee is Glenn. 79E Committee is Glenn with Ellie as the alternate. Watershed Committee is Glenn and Laurie. Museum Committee is Laurie. Kingston Days Committee is Peter. And then Liaisons, Highway is Peter. Fire Department is Ellie. Police is Laurie. Town Clerk Tax Collector is Ellen. Finance is Ellen. Recreation is Laurie. Library/Trustees is Ellie. Board Admin/Assessing is Ellen. Building Inspectors is Ellen. Human Services is Peter. And Audiovisual is Glenn.
Good job, everybody.
Yeah.
Get that filled.
Yeah.
Okay. We have an appointment. Chief Pellerin?
You want to make note of this here?
Yes.
Don't tell me that fire truck in that bar.
While Laurie is doing that, Ellie reminded me that we also have this in the packet that we should have just mentioned at the last item, and that is that Susan has put together a current calendar for us, meeting calendar for '25, '26.
Do you want me to announce these as I'm opening them?
Yes.
So just a little precursor, I guess. So the bid's closed February 28th at 5:00 p.m. These are the only two companies that bid. We have, we had reached out previous to that to many fire truck vendors, but these are the only two that submitted a proposal.
Okay, I just opened this box and it is from Alexis Fire.
So that's Lakes Region Fire Apparatus, they're up in Tamworth, New Hampshire.
Okay. Want me to read this one and then do that?
Sure.
Okay. Exactly, you could be here for a while, so we're just going to get to the bottom line.
To the bottom line.
To the meat of it, right?
While Laurie's doing that, Graham, did you expect more than the two, or...
So typically, a lot of fire truck companies kind of know the depths of the pockets of the towns that they bid on. Typically, for the last, oh, probably 20 years, we've been kind of tied to a company called KME. They're on the cheaper end of fire trucks. So it's kind of a crapshoot. Like I said in a few meetings, the, from the time of order to delivery can be anywhere from three to four years because of the backups that the industry is facing today.
From Alexis Fire, the Lakes Region Fire Apparatus, they say for all your apparatus needs since 1991. Dear Chief, thank you for allowing Lakes Region Fire Apparatus dealer for Alexis Fire equipment the opportunity to participate in your apparatus procurement procedure. We are pleased to present for your consideration a commercial chassis pumper tanker. This truck includes but is not limited to, and it has a list of probably 20 items. The proposal pricing is $738,242. No sense?
Seven thirty-eight, what was the...
Seven thirty-eight, two forty-two.
Two forty-two.
Estimated build is 550 calendar days. Balance is plus or minus any changes upon delivery and acceptance at the Kingston Fire Station. Offer is valid for 30 calendar days. And then there's option pages for payment and bond options, and then they have also included informational sheets, a current list of trucks on order and are delivered, and numerous proposals, specific supporting documents. This is a very comprehensive...
You don't...
It's a lot, so that's the crux of what we're looking for, right? Okay.
So both of these met the deadline, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Would they do really...
I was going to say, that's quite the knife. I don't want to be anywhere near that.
I wouldn't want to drop that on my foot.
No.
The second one is from Allegiance Fire and Rescue out of Old Mass. That's all fancy. Give me a second to find it.
Sure. While Laurie is looking for that, is that, do you want to refresh us and whoever might be listening on the, kind of, why we're at the stage where we are ready to purchase this and how we're structuring the payment?
So if you read, the current tanker that we operate now is 2001. Our replacement schedule is typically 20 years for a fire truck, so that puts us now at 20, 24 years, plus with the lead time of an additional three to four years, we're looking at possibly not getting this tanker until it's 27, 28, or 30 years old. So we had the two Warren articles that we submitted in March that we voted on last week were to add $50,000 to the capital improvement apparatus fund and then withdraw the, I believe it was $740,000 out for the vehicle.
Okay.
Okay, from Allegiance Fire and Rescue, the undersigned is prepared to manufacture for you upon an order being placed by you for final acceptance by Allegiance Fire and Rescue, the apparatus and equipment herein named and for the following prices. One, and it has its specs, one tanker, $882,945, and then they give us a $59,639 discount, and there's specifications in there. If 100% prepayment in the amount of 823-306, that includes that $59,000 discount. If we get that within 15 days, that's the discount. Like if you get the, if you prepay with the discount within 15 days, if not, then you have to pay the 882. This says, "Set apparatus and equipment are to be built and shipped in accordance with the specifications. Delays due to strikes, war, or international conflict, failures to obtain chassis materials or other causes beyond our control not preventing." So their delivery is within about 836 to 880 working days after receipt of this order.
Over three years.
So that's the difference. One was 550 and this one is like up to 880 days.
750, I think the first one's...
No, no, no. 550 calendar days for receipt, and then this one was 880. The other price was 738,242, and assuming we would pay in full for this one, the price would be 823-306. So, you know, that's like a...
And I will, so typically, like we did with the ambulance, we pay 100% upfront because you do get that discount.
Yep.
I'm assuming that Lakes Region will also offer that discount.
Yeah.
Plus, we have the trade-in of said, the current tanker or sale thereof.
Right.
But appears, it appears that even the starting point for the Alexis is significantly lower.
Significantly lower, and quicker for delivery.
And quicker.
But there's a lot of reading to do.
Yes.
Right. So this is the bid opening. I wouldn't expect that we would make a decision until, until the Fire Department has had a chance to review these, to make sure they meet all the specs and so forth.
For the, I'm glad we kept talking, I was looking. For the Lakes Region, if it's 100% prepayment, you deduct $43,081, so off of that $700,000.
So that would bring down below $700,000.
So below six...
Brings it down to below seven.
Below seven. The deduction was 43,081.
Did you have an offer for another, for the old truck from another department nearby?
No, the ambulance, I believe is going to dandy, but the fire truck. And I would propose doing the same thing. Oftentimes, they're not going to give you very much in a trade-in, but another Fire Department that wouldn't mind refurbishing it for 100,000 or 200,000 would probably give us quite a bit more money. So all things that I will explore and bring to the Board.
Chief, have you dealt with both of these manufacturers before?
So we, we don't have any pierces now. I met with the representative both on the ambulance side and the fire truck side, and then same with Lakes Region. Lakes Region does currently do our pump testing and all of our pump work, so we're very familiar with them currently.
Perfect.
I'd be comfortable going with either one, once I look at the specs and I'll bring a recommendation back to the Board.
Thank you. I know time is of the essence on this. You want to get the order placed. Will you be able to have a recommendation to us by the next meeting, do you think?
Let's go, I'll talk to Susan to get on the agenda, probably two meetings.
Okay.
We have a, we had a fire truck tanker committee, so I'd want them to look at it as well because they did all the legwork and, you know, kind of come up with a unanimous decision.
Okay. So the next meeting is not our Department Head meeting, but the following meeting is?
Okay, so yeah, let's plan on the Department.
So that might, that might be a good...
Thirty-first.
Sure.
Right, the 31st.
Okay.
If you can, and if not, we'll, just work with Susan on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, you got your name, right? All right, that was fun.
Thank you, Laurie.
Yeah.
Public comment number one. Going once, twice? None. Okay. Committee Liaison Reports. Ellen, you don't have any yet.
I have none.
Next, next time, next time. Peter?
The only thing I have is, Pedro's still waiting on information on '25 Newton Junction Road, referencing engineer looking into the property as far as the work that was done down there for an occupancy permit. And the Police Department in a roundabout way, I really haven't had a lot of chance to talk to Tom, maybe he can address it, but from what I understand, the sewer has been fixed. It was not a crushed pipe, it was a frozen pipe under that footing.
That's good.
So from what I understand, it is good, but are we preventing it from happening again? So that's what, we'll probably talk about that. But anyways, they were able to snake that out and get it all cleaned out, and it was a frozen pipe, not a crushed pipe. Big difference.
Yeah.
So, but I think Tom, you can, you want to address that, Tom, in the audience?
But does it like crack, wouldn't it, like if it's...
No, PVC pipe, it's just cold water, it freezes on the ground, it's all supported by water.
All right.
God, if it ever cracked, it's just going to...
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you. Ellie?
I don't have any of these times.
Okay. Nor do I. Laurie?
Oh, I do. Rec Center, so on the 5th of April is the Children's Easter Egg Hunt, and Abby was going to make sure she got with Fire and Police for coordination for traffic control and, he's not listening, and getting a bunny there. Got, yeah? Okay. Oh, I know, right? Just nod. And then they're still working out the details for the Adult Easter Egg Hunt, which is originally during the week, so we'll have details on that.
They're coordinating with Drafthouse?
Yes. I think, yes, I think they're doing it in coordination with Drafthouse. And they have a lot of people on the waiting list for summer camp, so it's very full, and so payment isn't due yet, so we'll start seeing that, if there's still issues, once people start paying or not. Great. So I feel like Abby has a handle on this, though.
There won't be issues this year.
Yeah, no, I think like she has a pretty good handle on it.
Yes.
At HDC, they met to go over the request for demolition of the 190-something Main Street, the old house, the corner?
Yeah.
Well, yes, thank you.
196, maybe?
Right. The new owners aren't going to demolish, they're going to try to save some of the house.
Right.
They think they can actually save the most, the oldest part of the house, which is like 1600.
1600-something, right.
Wow.
Yeah, so they're going to do their best to be able to do that.
That would be impressive.
It would be impressive, and they've been cleaning it out and kind of getting rid of some of the stuff in there now, so they're working on that.
Right, and they have a real mindset of wanting to save whatever they can.
Yep.
They realize the history of it. It is one of the oldest homes in town, at least the oldest part of it.
Yep. Yeah, yeah. So that was that, and then for Solid Waste and Recycling, there's a mailer that's going to come to the Select Board next week for approval, so we can get that sent out.
In the tax bills?
No.
No, separate?
Just a separate mailer, right. Because with the budget passing, there's a $6,000 line for public outreach and mailing, so we want to get that going. We're requesting a status of the lease. Susan, if you can find that out?
The state land lease?
Uh huh. We can't update the permit until the lease is updated, right? Because then the dam bureau can't sign off on allowing us to do that until the lease is signed, and then we can't get the permit until we have approval from the dam bureau. So it's just a, kind of a critical path here.
But at this stage, you're just expanding your permit?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. We're expanding to put what we will collect in the future because we don't want to change it every single time because it takes months and months and months. So we'll put on their plastic and paper, not to say that we ever have to, but we want to get it approved for what we want to do.
Can we refer to them as the Bureau of Dams?
No, Dam Bureau is great.
I noticed.
It's just fun to say.
It is just fun to say. We had 97 people on Saturday, so our average is just going up, which is great. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm not aware of it. Okay.
All right. Old business. We have the RFP for Groundwater Management Plan site work, and this relates to our ongoing work with the testing, groundwater testing for the PFAS contamination, and in the packets there is a draft of the request for proposals.
It's been viewed by the attorney, and this includes her edits, and she did not do anything to the work plan, which is larger. I sent it in an email. I have a copy here if you wanted to look at it, but the actual request for proposals, she made some additions to, and it should be ready to post unless you want to do anything more with it.
So is, remind us, is this in addition to work that is currently being done, or is this, this is additional work?
This is for the formation of the groundwater management permit or plan, I forget what it is, but that they're setting up, which is what DES wants the town to have going forward. It'll be a region that's specified.
forward, it'll be a region that's specified as being included in the area of, of risk. And they're gonna, they're gonna put in test wells.
Test wells, right, yep. Ellie?
Is this an expansion of the PFAS?
This is part of the ongoing investigation, but it's to examine the flow of the water and delineate the area.
Okay, yeah, but the flow of the water is included in this?
I believe that's why they're putting in the test pits in the.
We need to be sure of that, because we need to get that done.
Yep, that's.
I ask a question about this, because obviously I'm just coming in, and Susan, you said this is because we have to set up a groundwater management zone?
Mm-hmm.
Does that, how does that impact the properties by having a groundwater management zone established? Does any, do we know that information yet?
I believe the information would be in the deeds of the properties, but I don't have a lot of detail.
Are you asking if, if by having the zone established, how it would affect property owners?
Yes, I don't know if that's been discussed or reviewed or talked about by anybody, and I'm more than happy to have someone tell me later, rather than tie up the meeting if it has, but I just wondered how that does or does not impact the property owners by establishing this zone? And whether we have to establish this zone, I, I just, and I'm more than happy to have someone explain it to me later.
I can get all the information I have to you.
Perfect.
This is for the monitoring well installations and all of that to gain more information, and then that will follow.
I understand what this is, I just wondered what the, what the next, how the next step may or may not impact people.
In the, in the first paragraph, and it talks about the, the reports that they've previously provided to us. I think, um, I think in the September 2024, it explains the need for the groundwater management plan, so that might answer some of your questions.
Yep, that's what I'm saying, I'm more than happy to hear about it later, but this is a question I need.
Yeah, I think it will help answer some of those questions.
Okay.
Okay, so the question is, are we ready to release this RFP? And if we are, at the second page, it says that it's by sealed bid, and Susan has put a date on here, April 18 at noon as the, as the due, due date and time. And Sanborn Head has seen this, which is our consultant for a lot of this work.
Yes, they prepared it, actually.
And Town Council has reviewed it and commented.
And she's reviewed it and edited, so.
If the board is so inclined, we should do this by motion to release this RFP as, as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Ellie, second by Ellen, further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous, motion carries. Tom, would you like to come up to the table, please? Good evening. Good. So, uh, part of the work on the front stairs is, there's a question as to whether or not some additional traction treads or whatever would be added to the granite. I mean, I took a look at it, and it, to me, it looked like it'd be a huge trip point. But I think you had a recommendation for us. It's, it's on it, it's on it.
How's this one? Am I good? Wait, all right. That, because we had the architect design these, I'm guessing that we will have to, as a town, put it in writing that we were not going to, because remember, the, the first idea was the curve cut.
Right.
That wasn't such a great idea, I didn't think, and everyone agreed, so we didn't go with that. And this, to me, in my opinion, it's, slippery step is still going to be slippery with or without that. The surface of that granite is rough, I, I just, I, my own personal opinion, leave it like it's been.
Okay.
But we will have to acknowledge for the architect's ease of mind that, yes, this is what we chose and.
So we have to let them know that we deliberately choose not to have them?
Yes.
If that's our decision?
And, and, you know, obviously, that, one of his concerns is somebody slips, and I, you know, he doesn't want them going after him.
Yeah.
Or the company, so.
Any more discussion?
Well, we'll go after anyone that pays.
The department always did a good job with those stairs before.
With that?
Your department always did a good job with the stairs before, and there were no treads there, so I don't see any reason to add that on now and create a new, new problem or a new challenge.
Yeah, there will be a, down the road, that's going to be a problem. I think it's a trip step if you put them on, so, that's it.
Hang on, don't leave. Oh, you thought you were out of here. Peter, any questions on this?
No, I, I, I'm, sorry. No, I agree, I, I think it's been well over 20 years they've been out front like that, we knock on whatever, had a problem, it's granite steps, people are careful, we have railings, Tom had a good idea, but it's really treacherous, and we have an ice storm, they could use the back door.
Yep.
Close the front stairs down.
Yeah.
But I think, I think these things stuck on there with adhesive would not look attractive in front of the building. And I think it grooving, it's just going to fill full of water and freeze anyway, so I think that's kind of pointless as well. So I'd go with Tom's recommendation.
Ellen? Okay.
Excuse me, I'm a no.
All right, Lori?
Yeah, I'm absolutely no.
Okay, good. All right, so it's the consensus of the board. Would you like to do it by motion?
I move that we not add the treads to the front steps.
Second.
All right, motion by Ellie, second by Lori, to not add the additional traction treads or whatever they are to the, or grooving, or to the granite on the front steps. Discussion? All in favor?
Do you have to have Susan write a letter or something, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, or we can, yeah, whatever, I'm just, I just wanted to make the board aware that, because it is a liability thing, I think you're more liable if you put a trip step on there, but.
I, I agree.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
So the question is, though, from, do you, you need something in writing from us?
Yes, if we, whether she, she drafts it or we draft it, the board will have to sign.
Okay.
Because I can't sign, you know, even though I want to own the town, I don't yet.
I'll talk with Lisa, we'll get the letter together.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's just something simple.
Does it need to be signed by the board, you think?
Yeah, you are the chair.
The chair would be fine.
Chair will be fine.
So, um, so Susan, you'll work with Lisa to get that together for, for our signature?
And just as, before I forget the tomorrow or Wednesday, you should see Masons and actually doing something, they're, they're okay with the weather now.
Unless it snows.
Well, let's, let's think positive, it's supposed to, it looks good for the near future, so.
Well, it, it was interesting that, that it's all uncovered out there, so I assumed that.
Yeah, they, they're shooting for, he knew Monday was going to be a washout, so Tuesday, Wednesday.
All right. So we didn't take the vote yet on that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom. New business. Something in our packets regarding sale of town property, this is regarding lot, map U4, Lot 208. Is that different than the 47 Newton Junction Road?
There's two.
There's two.
I had a request this week on U4, Lot 208, which is 10th Street, I believe, and then 47 Newton Junction is the one we've been sitting on for a while, waiting for the attorney to notify all the prior owners. So if we can get that cleared up, those are two properties that you have the option of whether you want to put up for sale this year.
Well, the, the one on 10th Street, you were going to, we need to hear from, from the highway department.
I did talk to Tom, he didn't have any particular objection.
Come on up.
Come on up. We, we don't want you getting yelled at.
That's what I was thinking of, I, I don't remember. I thought there was something.
Yeah, the 10th Street lot.
Yeah.
Correct?
Did they, were they trying to put a, a new septic system in there?
I thought we were holding on to a certain lot down there for a future septic, possibly development.
Yes, and that was what, what we discussed, and this, the, the location and size of that, that's one of the smaller lots, we do have that bigger.
There's other ones in that area.
Yeah, that, that are two or three.
Yeah.
Times five, yeah.
This is.
And that's where I assumed the town would keep those, because they are big enough to put a, put a community septic, no, well, you know, it depends on how many units, but this, this lot seemed, it's, it's, in my view, and I'm no expert, but it didn't seem like it would be advantageous to doing any of that, except, you know, and that's just, that's just me going, yeah, that doesn't, but there are lots, yes, that are, because I think that's going to be individuality down there as, you know, community septic. But that lot is, is.
Should be no problem.
Yeah.
So there's no particular reason to want to hang on to that one?
No, I don't, I don't see it.
So that's the, that's the 10th Street lot? U, what's the lot number?
U4208.
U4208.
You don't, you don't need it for a space in that area for snow plowing or anything?
That would be nice, but it doesn't work, it just, no.
I don't know where it's located, so it's.
Yeah, it would not be nice, yeah, I went down, I plowed it this year for the first time in many years, and I'm like, but that, that lot, it doesn't, no, it doesn't.
It's not conducive for you.
It's not conducive.
Utilize it for that issue.
Right, I wish I could, but I would love to keep it then, but it's.
So have we been approached by someone who's interested in the lot?
Yes, that's why I brought it to you.
That's why it's brought to us.
It's in a butter.
Okay. And there is a process, and you've included that in our packet, that if we choose to do that, we have to follow these steps here to do this. Do we want to discuss the other one and then see what we're going to do with these? So the, the other one is at 47 Newton Junction Road?
That one, the attorney is going back to try to contact the two prior owners again, so we're still kind of waiting on that to make sure that we can do anything with it.
Okay, so that's on hold for the moment?
It's still on hold, but I, I have reached back out to her this week so that we can try to resolve that.
Okay, so 47 Newton Junction, we'll say that that's at least on hold for the moment with, with regard to us? Okay. So what's the board's pleasure with regard to Lot U4, I'm sorry, map U4, Lot 208?
If it's something the board's possibly thinking about, don't we need to send it to Conservation and Planning to get their input first, so?
Yeah.
Rather than make any decision other than to forward to them for their, yeah, their review and input, I don't think there's anything else we can do.
Right. So, so under, under the policy 414, Town of Kingston, title of the policy is Sale of Town-Owned Land, we adopted this in December of 2020, and it has the references to the RSAs and so forth, and the steps are that upon identification of a property that is eligible to be sold or bought, the following steps will be taken in, in keeping with the RSA. And there's half a dozen of them, the first is to submit the proposed acquisition or sale to the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board for review and recommendation, so that's our first step. Then based on whatever they might say to us, next step would be to notify a butter, setting a date for response, then publishing a public notice, after which we would hold two public hearings, at least 10 days, but not more than 14 days apart. And if more than one party is interested in the property, bids must be solicited. No sooner than seven days and no later than 14 days after the second public hearing, the select board will make its decision in a vote at the public meeting. So. So we'll send it to Conservation and to Planning Board?
Yes.
And get their input? Okay. May I have that as a motion, please? Motion by Ellie?
I'll second it, but I question, do we need to give them a date by which we would like a reply?
It's probably a good idea. We can include that in the motion.
I just.
You don't know when their next meeting is.
I mean, we can give them a month.
Well, yeah, give it 30 days.
They usually meet, I just didn't want to attempt to linger, we don't have to, but I'd leave that to the board, you guys have done it longer than I have, so maybe you don't need to.
Well, I'm not sure that I've ever done one of these, so.
No, I think setting a deadline is right, because they have to meet within.
You know, if they can't do it, they can just send us on time.
Yeah.
They could always just say, we can't do it in that timeframe because of our schedule, can we have an extra two weeks? And we're going to say no?
There's, there's time for that, so I would say you set like a May 15th or something, because we also need to check with the attorney about that one and see if we can even sell it, so.
You mean the other one?
The 47, yeah, you're, are you just voting on the one here? Yes. Okay, never mind that. But there isn't a huge rush on it, so.
Okay, so we'll include in, in the motion to request a response by April 17, which is a month from today.
Go April 30th or May 1st?
I would say the end of month.
End of the month?
The end of, the end of April, because.
So you're remending your motion to include a due date of April 30? Okay. I thought it was your motion.
Yeah, it was your motion, did anybody second?
Ellen and Ellie, I don't know.
I don't really, I'll second, I'll second it.
You might have to call me a laptop.
Two initials.
Yeah, exactly.
So the motion was from Ellie, with the, second by Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next item under new business. Bottled water for town buildings. The notes to us from Susan say, please discuss continuation or not of bottled water for town building bubblers in light of the installation of, of the point-of-entry treatment systems. So, I guess this is something the board needs to resolve. We agreed to have treatment systems and put, installed in all town buildings, with the exception of the museum, and those installations have taken place. It's my understanding that the Water Techs, which is the company that did it and is doing the testing, has determined that the water coming out of, at the end of the line, if you will, at the taps, is, is free of the PFAS, which, which was the concern. Now, I don't know if there are other concerns with regard to the water, but when the board authorized the, the purchase and installation of those systems, it was my understanding that we were going to do one or the other, we were either going to treat the water so that it could be consumed, or we would continue with purchasing bottled water. But if we do both, it kind of defeats the purpose, I mean, we're paying for it twice, so that's the question, I guess, before us, is we have results from the tests for both, from, for Town Hall? We have it from the fire department, I assume? We have it for DPW, do we?
And police.
And police.
And they're all posted on the website.
And they're posted on the website? Okay. So what were the? What would the board like to do?
Can I ask you a quick question? Just nod. Do you, do you own that bubbler or do you guys buy your own? Or do you rent it? No, I'm just curious. I think, I think they bought one downstairs, correct?
I've heard of it, yes or no?
It's not a yes or no.
The bubbler at the fire department?
Yes.
We own the physical bubbler.
Own the physical bubbler. And I think they own the one downstairs too.
Correct.
They're not, they're not renting it.
Right.
If you were to use a guestimate, how many of those bottles you go through a year?
How many do we go through?
Yeah, you're using a drink of water, right? How many a month?
I'm guessing three a week.
Three five-gallon jugs a week?
So I, I guess while I'm up here, I would just like to plead my case one last time before a vote is taken. Originally, and I feel like a broken record, but originally the PFAS filter went into the old central station because my guys shower there, they brush their teeth there, guys hang gals. They live there for basically twenty-four hours. So as we've discussed at, at nauseam, previous, in previous meetings, half of it is the mental safety of drinking bottled water and just mind over matter, I guess. Other is, and taste, it's, you know, the, and who knows if Poland Springs is really filling their bottles out of their own tap, you know, who knows? But so I've obviously taken a poll in my department. I've talked to other departments. The majority, if not all, the people that I have spoken to request the continuation of bottled water. So I guess that's my.
Is the bottled, is the bottled water in a, in a thing that makes it cold?
Yes.
And can it also make it hot?
Yes, or ours is fancy and you can have room temperature.
Oh, so you have choices of the temperature of the water?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I hear another voice.
Same with downstairs. I'll, I'll speak into the microphone.
And the, is the purchase of the bottled water in your budget?
No, the, I believe it's a twenty-eight hundred dollar budget that is in DPW currently.
So it's in DPW's budget, and that, that covers any of the bottled water per, okay.
Was that in twenty twenty-five's budget?
Yes.
It got pulled out?
It did.
Never, never got pulled out.
It did not get pulled out?
They're not using the microphone. Breaking the rules.
I'm gonna put a motion on the floor because we gotta decide. I'm in favor of the bottled water for the employees, and I move that we continue purchasing the bottled water.
Second.
And, and I support it for a number of reasons. Psychologically, it, it's worth the peace of mind. You're still gonna have the bubbles, you're still gonna have public coming in, you're still gonna have the fire department taking their baths as needed with the regular water out of the system and, and then washing trucks. All that's gonna still happen throughout the poet system with, that's been cleaned out of any contaminants. The fact that it gives our employees some peace of mind, to me, is worth the twenty-eight hundred dollars a year. Once you get used to bottled water, even if you know your water's okay, you still want bottled water. And I've been doing it for fifty-two years in the same house. I had put it in the system, and because I couldn't, didn't like gray colored coffee, and I, I don't have that problem anymore, but I still drink bottled water after all this time. So for that reason alone, I, I support us continuing to expend the money for the bottled water.
And I just, I just wanna clarify, because I'm gonna vote in favor of this, that I believe that the systems are taking care of the PFAS, but having worked in this building for quite a lot of years, PFAS is not the only thing sometimes we have to worry about. And I think if nothing else, we don't, I mean, we pay our employees, you know, and all that, but if this is, this is one for the employees, the twenty-eight hundred, I have no problem with someone being able to go get themselves a glass of cold water.
Just to, I keep hearing it, just to, to, I, I know the intent of putting these systems in, but the testing before they were put in, except for the fire station, there was no PFAS. So just let that out. There was no PFAS. It, it, every building.
Was clear of PFAS, except the fire.
Correct. So.
Yep, that's, that's not my issue.
Exactly. But I just hear it, and you're, and it's, it's putting people at ease. But the, we have two public water supplies at the rec center and the library, and they don't have the PFAS system. Why? Because they don't have PFAS. So we, we do have the, there's no, no PFAS system at the rec center, and the, the water test, it's a public water supply. The kids drink out of the, the bottle filler we put in. And it is a mental thing. If you say the building might be, might, might, I've heard this for years down, around town, let's say, you convince people that there's something off. That's what happens. But the test proved, before these were put in, there was no PFAS. Now, the eight dollars a day roughly a cost for water for four town, town buildings, eh, you know. But that's, I just wanted to get that clear.
Right.
That this building, the fire station was where the, the issue was. The other, the other buildings we put in systems that were very expensive and, and by the way, are gonna be very expensive to maintain. I'm not knocking it, but that's, the reality is, so anyhow.
And again, I, I believe the systems are taking care of PFAS. I don't want the town to think that the systems aren't. But my vote has nothing to do with PFAS. It's a whole different issue for me.
It is a different issue.
Thank you, Tom. Any other thoughts from the board?
So I, I, we had agreed that when we put the systems in, we weren't gonna provide bottled water. I think the same, having systems in the four public buildings and saying that we still will buy bottled water sends a message to the homeowners who don't get that option, because they might not feel comfortable with their poet system, but we're not allowing them to have the same option of getting water delivered. So I understand peace of mind, I totally get it, but we can't say it's fine for some and not fine for others. And we did agree that once we installed the systems, we weren't gonna pay for bottled water. So we either need to do it or not, and if we're doing it, if a resident comes forward and says they're not comfortable, then we don't have a leg to stand on to not then provide them bottled water.
I, I would, I would, I would disagree with that. I mean, we, we're, our, our responsibility to the town is to provide them with safe water, which we did. If all of a sudden they come back and say, we wanna drink Coca-Cola, we're not buying them Coca-Cola. We sup, we supplied them with clean drinking water. Just because I opt to drink bottled water, I have clean drinking water at my house. I think it's, I think it's a preference thing. We, we, we did our obligation with the systems for them, so I don't think we're any, any obligation to them.
Well, it's a preference thing for the people in the town buildings too. They prefer to drink bottled water when we have clearly said that it's free from PFAS.
And I tried to make it very clear in my statement that I'm not voting in favor of this because I think there's anything unsafe about the water. I think that if we can provide an employee with a cold glass of water during their workday, that it's healthier, it's good for them, and I'm just doing this as something to encourage the employees to drink cold water when they feel like it. And I think that to provide that to them is not a bad thing. At twenty-eight hundred dollars, it's in the budget. It's not because the water, I, it doesn't have PFAS in it. I haven't heard anything about whether it might have anything else in it. And I figure myself, if I wouldn't drink the water in this building, which I will not, I wouldn't encourage anyone else to. And it has nothing to do with PFAS. It was well before that that we were told not to drink water from this building. So the PFAS, I think, is taken care of. I think the things we've done for the town takes care of them. And for me, this is a totally different issue and why I would support this motion.
Do we have a motion, by the way?
We do.
Okay.
In a second.
In a second.
And the, I'm sorry, the motion was?
Continue purchasing bottled water.
And that was your motion?
Yes.
And Peter, you seconded?
Ellen seconded.
Ellen seconded. Thank you. All right, any further discussion on the motion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So three to two, three in favor, two opposed. That means there's no abstentions, so the motion carries. And the town will continue to supply the bottled water as they had been.
So, so I have a question. Is there, I know there used to be signs, at least downstairs, of don't drink the water, it's non-podable. Have those been taken down?
We took them down.
They're all down?
I think so. The, the last one was in the men's room, which I didn't realize was still there.
Okay.
So.
Because it is podable.
Absolutely.
So I, I, you know, we don't wanna, yeah, the signs should not be up.
And there wasn't, someone did express they were worried about the PFAS being in the pipes, which I did reach out to, Ryan Hood of Water Text, and he said the, the test was at the faucet. So there's nothing in the pipes either.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If the board will indulge me, I'd like to add at least one item under new business, and that is that our budget did pass. Yes, the operating budget passed the warrant at, at voting. One of the things that is in the budget is money for doing a wage and compensation study. And it would be really nice to get that underway and to have that ready for the budget season this year. And so I would like the board's permission for me to reach out and get some sample RFPs on this work that I can present to the board at a future meeting, because we do have to bid this out. We have a sense for what it would cost, which is, which is why we had a specific dollar amount in the budget. But I don't think it's something we wanna wait on. If it's, if it's information that, that we want for the upcoming budget season, we, we really should get this underway as soon as possible.
I'll make that as a motion.
Motion by Ellen?
Second.
Second by Lori?
There's been a tremendous amount of discussion on this for a couple of years. It was a big issue with the Budget Committee, and that money was put in almost last minute, if you will, with the information coming forward to get this wage study finalized and get it done. The Budget Committee was majorly in favor of it.
And you should know there was a tremendous amount of work done by Paula, Finance Director, and Stacy Dionne for Budget Chair, Chief Pellerin, Kent Walker.
Yeah, this is not in any way to dismiss the work.
There was a lot of work done over a two-year period of time.
Yep.
And we could not come to closure.
Right.
Right.
And that's, you know, get it outside, that might be helpful for them to do job descriptions and things and.
Job descriptions are done.
Are they all finalized? I wasn't sure. Well, good, that will be helpful for the people coming in to do it, but.
They have not been adopted. Not all have been adopted.
Okay. I just remember that this seemed to be something everybody wanted finalized and to move on. So it's in the budget, might as well get it passed and start working on it and get it done. So by budget season, it's final.
Further discussion on it? Other thoughts? All right, so we have a motion, a motion in a second to authorize me to start gathering information regarding a sample, samples of RFQ, RFPs, whatever it's gonna be, to bid, put us in a position to bid this out. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, all right. Board business. Susan, you have something written in here, accepting a conservation donation?
Yes, I didn't have the amounts until later. I think you have an email in your packets from Paula. There was a donation you need to accept as unanticipated funds.
So this is an unanticipated donation. We have an email here from Finance Director to Susan saying, we received a donation, the Conservation Commission Fund for the Pollinator Pathways. The donation was for two hundred dollars from the Portsmouth Garden Club and dated February twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, but was given to me this past Friday. So, so we've already, we've already received the donation. We have it in hand, and we need a, we need a motion to accept that donation.
Motion to accept the donation for the conservation fund in the amount of two hundred dollars as unanticipated funds.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Lori, second by Ellie. Discussion?
Do we, do we often write letters?
Conservation Commission.
I don't know. Yeah.
That's a good question, though. So, and then.
No, right.
And then who would it come from? Clearly the recipients, right? Like the conservation.
Should be conservation in this case.
Maybe we can maybe touch base with them, just to verify it.
The donation was from the Portsmouth Garden Club for the Pollinator Pathways.
Correct, yeah, we should make a note that, though.
So, wait a second.
A note from Conservation thanking them, acknowledging the donation?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so way.
The way it works is Conservation got that donation, so they take care of all of that. They just have to give it to us for me to deposit and for you to accept.
Right, thank you.
So Paula, I don't have to contact them as the liaison and ask them to write a letter or anything? That's all done. Thank you.
I mean, it's a good question, Peter. I think anytime we get a donation or anything like that, the, the town should acknowledge it. And, yeah. Did we vote?
Yes.
We did vote.
But no, no, I made a motion.
There was a motion in a second? Ah, yes, under further discussion?
Yes.
Okay, no? Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Permitting slash assessing office window hours.
I believe we were waiting until after the election, just kind of coasting, and I think that those hours should be set now. We know we only have one person still down there, so.
Right, the, the warrant article for getting additional help in that area did not pass. So we need to come up with a plan to make sure we've got the proper coverage.
So I guess the first question would be, has it, how has it been working with limited hours in the morning? Is it, have we received feedback that people are complaining? Because, you know, if it's working.
I haven't gotten that, but Pedro would know more, or Tori, it seems fairly quiet in the afternoons, but I think you need to set the expectations of when it's going to be open.
Are they open every, is the, the window open every day?
It's supposed to be eight thirty to eleven. It's usually open later if the inspectors are there. If they're there, they leave the window open, so it's a little changeable, but basically it's the morning hours.
Pedro?
So, yeah, the hours are still eight thirty to eleven. We have left, leave the window open if we're there. It's my nature that if we're there, we can serve the people. I'm pretty busy every now and then. My work demands that I'm mostly out on the road. I believe eight thirty to eleven is a good hour to have the window open.
Eight to eleven or eight thirty to eleven?
Eight thirty to eleven is what we have.
Eight to eleven?
Eight thirty to eleven.
Eight thirty. Eight thirty.
Yes.
Shouldn't we be looking at that whole department? I mean, you've got permitting and assessing. It's not just the, just the permitting. You've got. You've got assessing as well. I don't know that we can, I'd like to see the window open 8:00 to 12:00 every day regardless whether it's permitting or assessing, either one, so that the public knows they could come into the Town Hall between 8:00 and 12:00, Monday through Friday, and be received service for either assessing purposes or permitting purposes. One of the points of having the cloud permit was that would have relieved a lot of the burden of processing permits so that the individual handling both could have more time for assessing as opposed to permitting. And it's still a lot of question about whether things are working right or not.
Ellen?
Could I have a couple of weeks to meet with everybody as the liaison and talk to everybody about things they think might work or not work or whatever? And maybe we could then bring it back to the board and go from there?
Sounds like a great plan.
Great plan.
Yep.
Okay.
So then what you're saying is we're just leave at 8:30 to 11:00 for now?
Give me a chance to speak with Pedro and talk to everybody and kind of see if anyone has any different thoughts or ideas and why, and, you know, maybe bring it back to the board and.
My condition on that has always been to the windows should be open the moment the town's open, regardless. The question is to the hours of availability of the building inspector, which I have stated that because of my dependence, my job depending on me going out to be inspecting, and people that have already paid for a permit, most of the time they are running either with scheduling, that schedule is affected by how I perform the inspections. That's why I said, I mean, for me, the window should be open all the time because we're there. There is somebody there to assist. When somebody needs to see the building inspector, I believe they can request an appointment, sit down with me, give me the information so that I can be better prepared and provide them a really good service and be able to tell them, okay, this is what you're coming for. Prepare myself and also answer the questions. Sometimes I just, I'm just bombarded with somebody that asks me a lot of questions right on the get-go, and I have to step back and tell them, well, we need to scale back. It's not as simple as can I build a house in this lot? What are the restrictions of the lot? So there is a lot that we have to research. If I can do that in advance, it will help me to assist them better, reduce the amount of time that I spend with them sitting down at the table, and I can come up with a better idea on what they will need in the event they need to apply for a new building permit or anything of that nature. But I'm always being of the voice that that window should be open, the amount of hours that the town is open.
I think Ellen can meet with you like she suggested, just to get some more input from everybody on that side and come back to the board with a plan. That's what we need. We need a plan. We've all thrown different ideas and nothing stuck. So, and you have valid concerns, but I think you need to address that when you guys can kind of talk one-on-one and just kind of.
Your new best friend.
Your new best friend.
Okay. I'll make her know that.
Yeah. Might be a good idea.
You guys are going to get really close.
Yep. Thank you, Ellen.
Before you leave, Pedro, the second bullet under that regarding office hours, Ellen, I'd like to make sure you roll that into the discussion as well. Okay. Because, because under the job description, there is a very specific requirement there, and I don't know how we're, how we do, how we're doing on that, whether or not that needs to be adjusted or.
We'll try.
So it'll be part of the discussion.
We'll try.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pedro. Okay, so we have some guidance in red under the third bullet. So this, this regards the, oh, boy, sticky wicket, regards the recent notification of possible exceedance of PFAS contaminants at the property across the street here from Town Hall. And up to this point, I mean, the Select Board has been responsible for, you know, any of the communication, any of the work with the consultants, drafting of contracts and reaching out to residents for the, for the systems. And all of that has gone through Susan as the Select Board's representative, as our agent, if you will. So everything that Susan has done has been in our direction. And she had received a week or so ago, a notification of a recent test that had a possible exceedance at the property across the street, which was kind of a new situation. She was told by DES that the notification had to go out, and so she followed the, you know, the procedure that we had been working with all along. But the question came up then whether or not something like that should have been handled or gone through the health officer. And so I think that's a question that we need to, we need to resolve.
I did pose the question to my contact at Sanborn Head, and I did get an answer this afternoon, which you have in your packets. If you want me to read it, I can.
Sure.
I did lay out the whole question to him, including, you know, making sure that the health officer is notified, which I'm not sure has been constant. Good afternoon. Following up on our conversation, the private well sampling is being conducted as part of the fire station investigation, being performed pursuant to ENVOR 600. Under ENVOR 600, notification of groundwater quality violations falls to the responsible party, in this case, the town. The notification requirements do not specify the role or title of the individual responsible for making notifications. In Sanborn Head's experience, we typically correspond with town administrators or managers in regard to making notifications. In the particular case of 160 Main Street, the town, as the responsible party, was required, was required to make immediate notification under ENVOR 604.06E, which you did, and provide safe alternative water under 603.04, which the town is doing. The property in question is permitted as a non-transient, non-community water system. Notification under the public notification by Public Water System Rules, ENVDW 800 states, the owner or operator of the water system is responsible for making the notifications. That means the owner of the property would notify the other tenants, which she did. The above is provided with the following qualification, that Sanborn Head is not an environmental attorney. We can only speak to our experience working under the rules listed above. It is possible that town bylaws or other regulations empower the town health officer with notification responsibilities. That would be something we'd recommend the board defer to Town Council to address.
This is from the company that is putting in the soft assistance for us, correct?
Uh, no.
No, this is our consultant.
This is the consultant that's doing all the testing.
But it's not DES?
No.
No.
Okay. So we don't have a lot, we should probably get a lot of due from DES just to cover us.
This was copied with, Amy Gibney is with DES.
One of the problems, one of the problems with this one was that it was a commercial property, and none of us knew. The letter had gone out on a Friday night or Saturday, and we didn't know till Monday.
Right.
We'd get the calls. That didn't work out.
I would agree. I should have notified the board when I notified the person. Point taken there. But I was, when this happens every time, you have to call them immediately as soon as you know. So that's why I called on Friday night, followed up with the letter the following week. And this happened with this same property back in 2019 and 2022.
Well, neither one of those years were, did we have a health officer, I mean, a full-time person involved in that. It needs to be worked out, I guess is the bottom line.
Yep.
You need some better communication between the two.
I'm assuming this will come up when I.
Oh, I'm sure it will.
Yes, it will.
Chat with everyone downstairs.
Yes.
Yeah, I think communication seems to be the concern, and also from being in the playbook, know that there are different departments within DES, and so there might be some confusion or overlap as to who does what and when and all that. So I guess we'll all talk about that. But other than what you said and Susan said, because I read all the letters and everything, Susan seems to, I read the letter she sent, everything seems to be the way it was done before. But I agree that the error I felt was that on a Friday for commercial property, board of selection didn't know anything about it, in which case, when you started getting phone calls over the weekend as to what is this about, you shouldn't have been, you know, you'd have to say, I don't know what you're talking about. So, and I think that was, I think, seems like a lot of communication needs to be addressed downstairs, and hopefully I'm more than happy to chat with everybody about it.
Thank you. It's a good, it's a good plan, Ellen. Just a little bit more information on this situation. There was a question of whether or not the, there was really an exceedance of the limits, and so a second test was done on the water, I believe Thursday of last week. We don't have the results back yet because it takes a couple of weeks for those samples to get processed. So it might very well be in the end that there isn't a problem there, but we don't know that yet. There's also the, the issue that we, if there is a problem, we don't.
The source.
The source is, is still in question, and whether or not it's the fire station or, or something else. And the sample, I believe, they will be able to help identify what the source is because the PFAS sample has some kind of a signature that they can identify, whether it's the same as what they're sampling out in the rest of the sites here in town, or whether it's different. So, so there's a lot more information to come, and hopefully with Ellen's work, we can also streamline and correct, if necessary, you know, how we're communicating all of this. So. Any other questions on this item? Peter? Susan, are you all set for the moment on this?
I am, so. I, my only question is, I haven't been back in the loop. I just want to make sure that everyone understands they are supposed to be provided with water pending the second test. So I think everybody over there is aware of that. I sent another email asking if I can help expedite that.
They are supposed to be providing water.
Yes, they, if they're buying water, they're supposed to bill us.
Okay.
And they have the number of Monadnock. I know they weren't going to be too convenient because they don't deliver very often, so.
Right.
If we need to look at a different company, you know, but that's where I left off.
Okay.
I'll ask you something different, in case something comes up in the next couple of weeks. I think that the board hasn't changed the procedure.
Mm-mm.
That Susan still continues doing what she's doing, although as she herself has said, she'll make sure that Pedro's in the loop and he gets the information that she's sending out and that the board will also be made aware. But other than that, we haven't changed any policy or procedure at this point.
Nope. I mean, Susan's been managing it, I think, though, since we started it, and that hasn't deviated at all, and it hasn't been questioned until now.
And we can also, as Peter brought up, the person on DES, we can also make, that person's been copied, but you can make sure that they don't have any additional input that we, you know, again, communication, get the information, bring it back to the board. Sound right for everyone?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. And to the best of my knowledge, the businesses that are involved in this property are functioning and seem to be doing okay at the moment, so. Okay. Thank you. Before I go on to public comment, just one more item under board business. If you would put, between now and the next meeting, put your thinking caps on and think about priorities for the board over the next year. We do this at the start of each of our seasons, if you will. We should probably take a look at the priorities that we have set for ourselves last year and see where we are, which ones are done, which ones aren't, which ones we want to keep on the list, and then possibly add some other ones. So Susan, I'm going to ask if, ask board members to submit the, their suggestions to you. And if you could, perhaps by our next meeting or the meeting after that, whichever, whichever works best for folks, submit your ideas to Susan, and then we can talk about it. Ellie?
And I have one other thing. And Susan sent out an email to us this afternoon about the young lady that was interested in summer work. She had done some.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Note-taking for us before. She did an excellent job, and she's on vacation from Emmanuel College. She did a very good job before and is looking for some part-time work this summer.
Right. She, she did. She did excellent work. She, she was the, she did board secretary work for a couple of different boards here in town. So if anyone, if any board has need for, for help, she's a good resource. Did anyone else have any other board business before we move on?
You do have a letter from me resigning as moderator. It might not be in your packet.
I don't think it is.
No, she didn't.
And that, that's gone to, it's okay, just this afternoon. The town clerk has it and also a copy to the supervisor's checklist because they have the appointing authority to fill that position. So I've spoken with at least one of them, or I spoke to the other two to try and set up. We had a recommendation for them that both Jamie and I agreed with, which would be Deb Powers. She's trained previously before she has personnel, personal issues and has come to the last, couple of the last election to see how you close everything out, so. But then, but that'll be up to the supervisors. I think they're kind of going to try and set up a meeting soon as they can so they won't be a lapse.
I spoke with Claudine earlier today, and she was asking if we had a procedure making appointments. Does it usually be post an opening, give 30-day notice? I said, and so anyone can send in the letters of interest. And so she was going to meet with the supervisors and go from there.
Good.
All right. Thank you, Ellen. Brings up a reminder, I'm assuming that both you and Peter have been sworn in? Thank you. A little late to ask that question. Yeah, good thing. Good, good thing. Ellie, you should have asked that first.
I knew, I knew they had.
Okay. All right. Well, you held out on me.
I didn't mean to.
Okay. Public comment number two. Chief?
Graham Powell, 9A Woodland Drive, private citizen. So I understand the need for better communication, but I think let's highlight better cooperation. When the gentleman from 160 Main Street came with the PFAS, or potential PFAS issue, I saw Pedro get up and offer to help him the very next morning. So I don't think it should be, this is your responsibility, this is his responsibility, or whoever in between. I think it should be, let's work together to fix the solution. Being a private business owner for over 30 years, nine of them in the restaurant business, that may very well be his only income. And for that to be paused or, you know, taken out of context because it's her job or his job or their job or my job, I just think better cooperation in all departments should be taken note of.
I totally agree, Graham. And in this case, better communication would have been nice because I was handling it, and then I was told, you're not handling it anymore.
And again, I don't want to go back and forth.
And if, I just, come to me and talk. And that's part of my letter to them, is that I want to make sure that he's included.
Okay. I'm not slinging any mud, I'm just saying, and it's not just Town Hall, it's other departments as well, just, instead of better communication, let's work on better cooperation. Sorry. Thank you. Again, private citizen.
Thank you. Public comment. Anyone else? Okay. There are two folders going around. There are the typical correspondence items. Some, some, they're all signed? Everyone's got them?
Yeah.
Okay. Approval of minutes from March 10th?
Second.
I assume, are there just public minutes? Oh, there's the non-public as well.
The non-public to be signed, to be sealed in perpetuity.
So is, is the, Peter, is the motion for both public and non-public?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And I believe that we did the sealing after we did the, at the time.
Yep. That's right. We did.
Yes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. So four, zero, one. Thank you. Thank you. I thought we were going to need a non-public session, but I'm thinking that Ellen probably is going to be doing some work. Does anyone feel that we need a non-public session at this point?
Pedro?
Pedro does. Pedro does. Okay. And under, under what category?
Personnel? I don't know. What is it?
Personnel?
Personnel? Ninety-one? I, I don't know, Susan. I guess.
Disciplining of employees would be A. Matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation, that's C. I, I'm not sure. Or unless he's talking about emergency functions or something, I'm not sure.
Let's, let's try C.
Okay.
Which one is C?
Reputation. Is someone going to make a motion to go in then?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes, roll call. Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
I didn't.
Second. All right. Ellen? Ellen?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
But I'm just double checking, we're going into non-public session because it could affect the reputation of...
A person, not a member of this board.
Okay.
I've got the...
Yeah, because, yeah, it can't be, if it, it can't, it can't affect, if it's one of us that's affected, that doesn't qualify. Right. So it's someone other than this board?
Okay.
All right. So roll call vote. Ellen?
Sure.
Peter?
Yes.